Session to order, get started. We don't have really anything on the work session, so we're gonna have plenty of time to go through the agenda. And I know there's a couple of things that I think we want to have some discussion about. But I will start with committee updates, and I'll start with Councilman Martin.
Yeah, so the REG Board, we're in the process of vetting some new members. I think we have two places opening, and we have about five applications as far as the REG Board is concerned, and I think we'll vote on those members the next time we meet. Fairhope Environmental Advisory Board met on Friday, and one of the things they were concerned about is our relationship with the county, yeah, as far as the streaming and the MRF. Right, so that was just something that they were talking about, and they're always a little bit ahead of the game, so just giving them credit for doing it. Yes, so I'll bring it up. But other than that, I thought that was the most significant thing that was coming out of the Environmental Board meeting, and that's about it, Jay.
All right, Councilman Conyers?
Well, the Fairhope Library had the Chocolate and Champagne event. I was unable to attend, but I think it went well, and I have no other committee updates besides that.
Okay, Councilman Boone?
I have no committee updates.
All right. If I had one, I can't remember what it is, so we'll move right along. We'll do department head updates, so if you've got something, welcome, come join us, let us know if you've got something on the agenda, and we'll talk it out right now. So I'll start with Kim, as usual.
I just want to let y'all know about the press release that we received from GFOA that we received again award for our financials. So Mayor got the press release last week, and so we should have the official token that they give us to put on our plaques any day now.
That's great, that's great. What is this for? I'm sorry.
So our financials, we have different criteria we have to do on our financials, and it's sent to its Government Financial Officers Association. And so it's a national group that also looks in Canada, too. So we have to submit our financials. The deadline is through March 31st, and then they go through it with a fine tooth going through our financials, and then you can receive an award. So it takes this long. We submitted before March 31st, and we just finally last week-
We got an award.
-got the award.
Congratulations.
So the city's done that for several years, have received that award.
That's great.
Very good. Good job.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Evening, Richard.
Just a couple of kind of reporting items, and it kind of correlates with the two K-1 Center items on the agenda. As you know, we are under a process of advertising asbestos abatement in the original school building there, and so tomorrow we'll have our pre-bid meeting, and we will open the bids for that work on the 23rd. So I will at least be able to report back to you on this 27th work session about what those bids look like. I will tell you, this is my first asbestos abatement, so I really don't have a good feel of what we're looking about cost-wise. I hope it's not terribly bad, but, you know, it is a specialty service, and we do, unfortunately, with the pipe insulation is the tougher ones in there versus the tile and mastics. Also, just for y'all's information, we had an opportunity, such as we had last year, as one of the outcomes of the Rebuild Alabama Act, they throw out a one-time $250,000 non-matching for a resurfacing of any road in our network, whether it's a city maintained, county maintained, state maintained, as long as it's functionally classified as an arterial or above, excuse me, a collector or above. Last year, we put in for County Road 13, the portions in the city from Morphe South City Limits, and we did put that in again. Hopefully, we'll get that money, and the beauty about that is that as soon as we let that work, we submit that information, and they just send us a check of $250,000. So it's just as a non-match, helping to continue to better our roads. One thing I am excited about is we did have a workshop meeting with the design team on the Triangle property. We actually did it in the home that was donated there on the property, the old Dias homestead. Got out and walked the property as well as did that. We had the whole design team, including the foresters that we've had put under contract, and hopefully, I'll be confirming with the clerks sometime in March. They want to come and present to you where they are in the conceptual and preliminary proposals for the different elements of this grant and what they're proposing to start the development process of this park lands as. So we're excited about that, and it was really a good meeting. I think Mayor shared some pictures and such. I'll jump ahead and discuss the two easy items on the agenda on 13 and 14. You may be confused of why you're seeing two A&E contracts approvals for the same property. Item number 13, and just so we can hopefully not make this clear as mud, K-1 Center is a historic building, which is the original school, and then it's a campus, and the campus is what, seven acres? We received an EDA grant, Economic Development, that was very specific to the historic school building, okay, to repurpose it for Hatch to be able to be a tenant there, to have a business incubator, and that grant specifically says the architecture and engineering money is only for the building, okay? It doesn't even contemplate that we could do landscape architecture for the ground in front of it, doesn't talk about parking on the site and other programmatic uses of the site. So item 14 is just the Hatch portion, okay, and Hatch granted us $293,000 for the A&E services, and that is the upfront investigation, design, all the programmatic of the buildings, delivering to construction plans, to bidding it, to having the oversight, okay? Item number 13 is the master planning of the campus. That's 151, if I remember correctly. What this is going to help us do is we got the following challenges. One, we already have FIF, who is doing a phenomenal job of developing the portion that they have on their lease. We want to make sure what we do complements what they're doing, and what they're doing complements what we want to do. Also, I think there's a desire to look at the long-term planning of this site for ultimately performing art center and other community uses. So that contract is going to help with that programming part, that kind of makes sure FIF works with Hatch, which works with the city's needs, and gets us a layout, a master planning of how we get to the future in that. So that's why there's two separate. And understand, the bad thing about federal grants, they don't like you ever to mix dollars, so that's why there's two different contracts, two different amounts that work in conjunction with each other, but serve different purposes. So that's, and I'll be glad to answer any questions on item 13 and 14. So 13 is, if you want to think of it, is the city's portion for the master planning, the programming of the whole campus, and integrating Hatch, Hatch's use into it, as well as FIF's use into it, and all other city needs, where item number 14 is just the historic building, and how do you design a project to restore and repurpose the maximum amount of that building for the purpose of Hatch to have Class A office space and business incubator?
Richard, just real quick on that, on the city's portion on item 13, looks like we budgeted $116,000 and change?
Okay.
So is that, I mean, I guess my question is, why are we that much over? Or is that just, how did we get there to that number?
Not the grant.
Yeah, not the grant portion?
Not the grant, 13.
Yeah, the city portion.
And when we sat down and kind of went out with the proposals for the scope of work of what we wanted to accomplish, that's, you know, that is always the part, we pick a firm before we ever talk about dollars and cents, and then we've laid out, you know, this is what we want to accomplish, that's the fee that they came back with to accomplish our goal. So I know it's a little backwards, but, you know, and frankly, I don't want to say this out loud, but I will, the grant set a number upfront, so we knew what that number was going to be, and that's probably a little skinny for what the work they have to do to do that building. So you're probably seeing some account balancing there.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
All right. So you said the two easy ones, and then you also have, what is it, number eight?
Correct.
I'm not gonna let you, I'm not gonna let you, I'm not gonna ask you to talk about that now. I want to let Mr. Burrell get here-
Okay, very good.
And then we'll circle back to that, because I think we'll have a little discussion on that.
I got one question.
Yes, sir.
Is all this engineered for the overall building, or just the parts that Hatch is going to use?
That's going to be, it's going to be for the overall building, okay? And that's part of, we're not going to have good answers to all these questions until we get into this process. I think the challenge that we're going to have is, I think the architects have to go through and come back in very early stages of what is the best route, and you're all going to be engaged in this, is that I don't think it's realistic that based upon what the grant has and the square, the potential total amount of square footage, when you think about, you have a historic building that has two major additions, even though they're old additions, I think they were 40s and 50s or 40s and 60s, and then the outbuildings were built, plus you got a basement and part of those wings as well. So there, just on the main floor, there's 27,000 square feet of currently enclosed space, and then probably another 25% of that in basement space, if not a little bit more than that. So that's going to be part of their scope of work, is they've got to get in, and early on, they got to tell us, okay, here, folks, realistically, with what we've got to work with, we think this is what we can deliver for Hatch. Here's what we think we can leave as basically unfinished tenant space that is, has a secured envelope all the way around it, and has the heat and cooling capacity, but it's not finished space, so that then the city has options in the future, and even has options when other opportunities come. That's kind of how I see it, and I'm not saying that's how it is right now, but that's going to be part of one of their early responsibilities, figure out what they've got to work with, come back and sit down with us and say, here is option A, option B, option C, how do you want to pursue this? And, you know, theoretically, when you start looking at the programming side, looking at a performing art center, you know, maybe some of that footprint of a later addition needs to be eventually used for the performing art center space, so that's going to be those considerations, and it's going to be a real iterative process involving y'all to say, yeah, this is the direction we think we need to go. So we're just, that's what this contract gets us into, is start laying out how we get to where we want to accomplish, and we're, and we're very specific in the language, is that you're going to have to tell us what you can deliver for the budget that we have to work with, so.
There, Councilor, I have a question.
Go ahead, please.
Richard, they're not doing the basement, though, from what I read. The basement is not in that scope of practice, and this is the same company that's doing both the architect and design, correct?
That is correct.
So why are they taxing us on the back end when they're doing it, we're separating it, but I don't think we should be taxed, in my opinion? I mean, that's just my opinion. I see them taxing us, and they're doing the job on the front end, but then they're taxing us. I just don't think that's-
Well, and ultimately, I don't think you can restore finished quality space above a basement that has some environmental and physical and structural challenges. I mean, even though at the end of this project, if there's basement space still there that's not going to be used for Hatch or even for occupied space, it has, you know, there's groundwater intrusion, especially in the wing furthest to the north, that's going to have to be addressed. I mean, because there's a mold, there's a water, and a lot of the mechanicals run through the basement, chases between the floors, so you're still going to have to do some work in the basement to make the upper, the main level usable, so you just, I don't see how you would fix something above something and not fix the issues with what's below it.
No, I agree, but it doesn't seem that they're, they're not looking at that right now, from what, and I may be reading it wrong, but you helped me. When I read that, it said clearly on the green sheet that the basement is not considered in the scope of work.
No, I don't, I don't think the basement is considered to deliver finished space usable for Hatch, but the whole building is in the scope of work. What I consider the historical school building, it's all interconnected, there's the main portion that faces Church Street and the wings.
We just need to make sure they're considering the basement, or they're not going to come back with another receivables or invoice to do the basement, and we're paying them now, and they're leaving it out. I just, you know, that's something that we might want to-
Very good. Well, I mean, I feel confident that the scope of work that is in there involves the whole building envelope, and that's all floors. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'm just looking, and this might be wrong, but if you look under the design phase under tab 14, it says, upon approval of the schematic plan, provide construction documents, drawings, and specifications for the remediation of the overall roof, basement areas, and ground floor areas that are affected by the given program for Hatch Fairhope. So I mean, I read that as them having to do whatever work is done in those areas to make it work for Hatch.
That's correct.
Whether that's finished or not, but obviously remediated to the point where Hatch can operate safely in that space.
Yes, sir, and I feel, I think, it's a building envelope project, meaning their scope of work doesn't really go outside the facade, that's why we have the other portion, but everything that's within the footprint of that historic building is in play as far as the A&E services.
I know that's the case.
Thank you.
Yep, Richard, and I'll bring you back up in a little bit, talk track. Thank you, sir. Chief?
Sir?
Thank you, sir.
Just to give you a quick update, in January, we ran one brush fire, we had two structure fires, one vehicle fire, 25 EMS assists, 21 motor vehicle accidents, and 53 faults or miscellaneous runs for 103 calls for the month. And just to give you something to compare to, in 2022, January, of January, we ran 101, so we're holding pretty even call-wise so far. The handout I just gave y'all were some accomplishments that we managed to do in 2022, and some our goals and projects for 2023. In 2022, we got a firehouse subs grant for $50,000 for thermal imaging cameras. We were able to purchase 14 handhelds, the radios, four of those were purchased by the city of Fairhope, and we got 10 from a AFG grant. We had, or we bought 23 sets of turnout gear, eight from the city, 11 through the fire department, and four came from a COVID grant. We ordered a Polaris Ranger and a trailer to help with wildland fires, and also special events around the city. We put a new command truck in service. The city was gracious enough to get a new ladder truck ordered. Squad Two was put into service. We accomplished two mutual aid agreements with Silver Hill and Fish River Marlowe. We had a firefighter symposium that hosted 35 firefighters from fire departments throughout Ballin County and Mobile County. Our hands-on class, which we've been hosting for the last few years, had 50 firefighters from five different states. Our Ballin Firefighters Foundation had a great response to our Boston Butt Sale. And then one thing that we're very proud of is we were able to host the, or do our first annual firefighter awards banquet, to show appreciation not to just our firefighters, but also their families. Do y'all have any questions about any of those things?
Great job.
Okay. So some goals and projects we have going for 2023. We have a grant in for extrication tools, a grant in for a breathing air compressor to go to Station Four. We're working on getting a replacement plan started for our engine three. We're hoping to have the Station Five land deeded, I think the last thing we heard was somewhere around October, November. Squad One has been ordered, and we hope to put that in service by mid-year. Our boat, we hope to put our boat lift down at the marina, and finally get that going. We hope to put gas monitors on each of our five engines. We have some kitchen upgrades, specifically the cabinets and floors at Station One, that are in the process of being worked on. We have, the hands-on class this year is projected to have somewhere between 100 and 125 firefighters from all over coming. And then for fire college classes this year, currently, there are four scheduled. We have our certified volunteer firefighter, firefighter two, our instructor one, and officer one. We also have some training field upgrades going on, and y'all will be happy to see that the barbecue fundraiser is back to being planned.
Very important.
That's right, that's right. And the one item I did skip, VOD. What this is, it's volunteer on duty, and what we're hoping to accomplish with that is we're going to start, hopefully in March, we're going to start putting a crew together and manning a truck, starting on the weekends, Saturday and Sunday, eight to eight. So we're going to have a manned truck to respond to calls during that time. This is not due to manpower problems, this is not due to, or anything like that, this is just a better way for us to serve the citizens of Fairhope. It'll shorten our response times a little bit, and it's a good thing, and we're hoping in the future to expand that, if this works, to expand that to also weekdays. So we're looking for, looking at it as a way to increase our longevity as well, so. Does anyone have any questions on anything for our goals this year?
Yes.
Corey?
Yes, please.
Yes, sir. The relationship with Principal Cardwell, are those kids coming to you out of high school?
The Explorer Program?
Yes, sir.
It's going a little slow right now, but we've got about, we've currently got about eight on, eight in the program. We're kind of, honestly, we're kind of evaluating where it needs to go. The kids we've gotten in the past few years are a little different than, they're not the fire kids that we had in the past, so they're not, they're having to learn the fire service where the other kids that came up through the program kind of knew it, so that's why I call them fire kids. But there's eight in the program right now, and there's, we've got room for 15 total.
Okay, that's good.
Should you, sorry, Mr. Chair, may I ask a question?
Please.
I mean, has anybody been at St. Michael's High School, which is also-
Honestly, hadn't even thought about that one. That's a good, that's a good thought. Yep, it's a great thought. We'll put out some feelers there.
On the VOD, will y'all rotate stations, or?
We're going to man Station One for right now, which is the one behind Thomas. That's got pretty much everything we need, you know, the facilities we need, but as this grows, there may be room to man other stations as well.
Anything else, guys? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, Chief.
All right, who's next? Don't be shy, guys. Jeff, you got anything? Jay?
But since we have time, just a few updates on what we've gotten completed and what we're working on. On the wastewater side, Valley Lift Station, I remember us talking about that back last year, is completed, and it's running well. We also, while that station was down and was on bypass pumps, we focused on the drainage area that contributed to that station, and made a lot of I and I repairs, inflows, infiltration, and we're seeing a definite decrease in the inflows, so I think that's really a high point for us, because we hired the station done, but we did everything else, all the repairs. So that station's finished and up and running. We're at River Mills now, lift station, that one's done in-house. Our guys are actually doing the rehab on that station. We're utilizing our own call contractor a little bit to help in some of the things that we can't do, with this cleaning the wet well that's, we don't have the equipment for going that deep. So they did that, and we're hiring the lining done on the station, but other than that, our crews will do it. And Tom and his crew is the lift station on the rehab, and they do a great job, so we are getting several things. At the upcoming meeting, probably on the next agenda, you'll see two more lift stations that will be out for bid. Matter of fact, it's one of our largest stations, the Dog House, that will be out for rehab, and then East of the Sun Lift Station, which is over on the east side of Greeno, behind the cemetery, that station will be rehabbed. Those are two stations that give us a lot of issues, so all that was also in the budget, and part of it is some money through the rescue fund.
Rescue fund. I couldn't quite, where was that, on the east side of Greeno? I'm sorry.
East of the Sun Lift Station?
Yeah, you said there was one on the east side of Greeno?
Yes, behind the cemetery.
Behind the cemetery?
Yes, sir. Pretty close, the booth.
Oh, okay, I got you.
Back there. It's really in the middle of nowhere, there's nothing, swamp and woods.
Okay. I was trying to picture.
And our new back truck, we put in service, if we hadn't had an opportunity to talk, we put the back truck in service a couple of months ago, and it's being utilized every day. As a matter of fact, we're using, right now, we're using both back trucks every day. We help the other utilities as well. I think we did some work with electric, using hydro excavation, which we can do with our back trucks. It can go deeper than what you can with a little portable rig, so both trucks are being very well used, and the guys are doing a great job taking care of them, keeping them clean, so just another addable. Our department, they're very proud to have good equipment, and I firmly believe they take care of it. We make sure they do, but we haven't had to. They've stepped up. We've got two new hires that started a couple of weeks ago, that's going to be putting together our lift station crew that we've talked about, that's also mandated with our consent order, but it's, I think we've got two great hires. One has a mechanical background, he retired from Sterling, Illinois, working for the city up there, he was over there fully. And the other young man is from Georgia, and he has a large commercial electrical background, so I think we have two good, they moved here, so we are slowly getting all of our positions filled, and I think we've had some real good hires.
Okay.
On the water side, Water Treatment Plant Three is going well, they're pouring the wet well as we speak, and that's something I carried, I think Mr. Boone out, but I would invite anyone, if you have time, let me know, and we'll take a tour and go out there. I think you'd be very pleased at the progress, and if you remember when I carried you out, maybe a year or so ago, what it looks like now to then, our crews did all the cleanup, it's, we've come a long way. The well is being tested to, right now, they're doing the flow test on it for the capacity, so the new well should be finished in the coming days.
Good.
So, the new well should be finished in the coming days. We're still waiting on materials for the water line. That's kind of, we're estimating it sometime April to May timeline to start getting the first twenty-four inch duct alongside.
That's good.
We'll also have, in the coming meetings, our engineer that we request to do the, looking at the future. We're adding, talking about adding a well at Water Treatment Plant One, and also the next well at Water Treatment Plant Three, and then looking at testing water in a deeper aquifer at Water Treatment Plant Four.
I love it.
That's the one we had a couple of hits on for PFOS, and we've got elevated nitrate at that plant. So, that's just for down the road in the future, looking ahead, trying to stay ahead of the water, you know, as water use goes up.
I love it.
And the last is, just like to thank Tim Bong for helping. He's our fleet maintenance. He's checking with our vendors. We had designated amount in our budget to buy generators, and he's worked out a heck of a deal on used generators that meet our buyers' group. They're low-hour generators, and we're going to be able to buy four or five for the amount. When I first thought we was going to be able to get three. So, by what we're doing, this should cut out any rentals of generators that the city would have for special events. Right now, they're renting generators, so this would have our generators in-house, but would also give us emergency backup for power outage or storms.
Are these portable generators or permanent generators?
They're portable. They're diesel.
Hoping they're portable.
We bought one, one-seventy-five, and then there'll be a hundred KW and be multiple sixty KWs. So, that would, that'll run all of our stations, you know, whatever size we have, but it would also for the events. I think last weekend I seen, they rented an eighty KW and a forty KW.
They could rent those too, right? The rest of our generators, are they all portable? Are they all diesel-powered, or do we have some natural gas for our generators, since we own our own natural gas?
We do have the permanent mount. We've got one at Dog House, one at North Section, I think is blowed up. We're putting a diesel in there till Tim can get it tore down. That one's given a lot of trouble. The trouble with the natural gas generators of size is the engine. Most of them are running that V-ten forward commercial industrial engine, and it's not holding up. This one up here has been worked on two or three times, blowing head gasses. But we have got, as a new generator, the new lift stations come on that can utilize a smaller generator than they are natural gas, yes.
I was going to say, because you've got to make sure that you always have supply of diesel.
Yes, sir.
Reserve and probably treat it, and you've got to run those lines.
Yes, sir. We just have a lot, there's a lot, I guess it's just technology of today. There's just a lot of issues with the larger generators on natural gas. You know, it's a shortages like everything else. You know, the car manufacturers build the engines, and there's a shortage.
Yeah.
So...
But that's on the old generators. The new technology will fit the natural gas.
That's the one we're having trouble with, buying new natural gas generators.
Supply them.
When you get up to the eighty, one-hundred KW, it's the engine size. Because you're using double horsepower with the gas, and then you do it with a diesel. So, a hundred KW on a gas burner would be a V-ten, where they're doing it with a, you know, inline six-cylinder on the diesel. And on the, I forgot, on the agenda, we have one item, and that's the lift station for Publix, the permanent station.
Counsel, so anybody have questions for Jason on item number ten, why he's up here? If y'all, if y'all recall, ten, that's something that we've been discussing for a while as far as a regional lift station in that area.
We were waiting on two meters for the two generators they set, but they did come in. Since last time we've met, we've installed a new metering station at Thomas Hospital, so that's up and going. Like Jason said, as far as hiring, we hired somebody two weeks ago. We have five interviews this week to do for two positions, and we've had a lot of good interviewees here recently, more so than past. It seems like the last week and a half, we've been flooded with applications, and they're turning out to be very good applicants. So, you know, a year ago, so we couldn't hardly get any applicants. And I think we've had ten or fifteen in this last two rounds, last probably thirty-four weeks of job opening. So, that's been going good. Eleven and twelve are ours. They're, the county is widening Highway Sixty-four from one-eighty-one all the way to the creek, and they're going to put a turn lane all the way down Sixty-four. Tire gas lane has to be relocated. Volker's doing the engineering for the county, so we are requesting that Volker do the engineering for this replacement. Then the same thing is true on item number twelve, which is Highway Thirty-one. They're widening four thousand feet of Highway Thirty-one, and the same thing, Volker's helping out with the engineering. So, while they're already preparing this, letting them do the engineering for the gas as well. These are reimbursable for the county and for the state. We will have to put these out for bid once the engineering's done, hire the contractor, and then it's all a hundred percent reimbursable.
Very good. Great.
Anything else?
I was getting ready to start raising K about you and what you and I have talked about in the past, but once you said it's reimbursable...
Yeah. These projects are. Some are. But these are.
Yeah, because if not, the answer's none.
That's, yeah. That's not good.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
We'll have a better day today than Friday.
Yeah, I was going to ask you.
Thanks, Jeremy.
All right, have we got, Jeff, you got something on the agenda?
I just got number sixteen we added to declare a Lenovo ThinkPad Two-Four-Seven-Eighths surplus. That's all I've got on the agenda this week.
Counsel, if I can add to that, the Airport Authority, they had asked if we had a surplus laptop something, so that the new airport manager could use it and save the Airport Authority some money. So, I think that I had to contact the mayor and see if we have anything that's available. And I guess she reached out to Jeff, and that's how this came about.
We tried to find the best one we could. We wore our laptops up pretty good by the time they're done, but this one should be pretty good for them.
Okay. Good. Thank you, sir.
I can speak to number nine, the green drainage at Quail Creek. If you have any questions on that.
I don't. I saw it came in under budget, so that's good. That's good.
It did? That's pretty much the main question, right?
That's right. Number one question, for sure.
Other than that, the project at Valana is making progress. Mother Nature's not helping us much, but we are making progress when we can, so.
Perfect. God bless you, man.
We're still tunnel vision for March eleventh.
Thank you, Pat.
Gives you good engineering for drainage issues, on the plus side.
We got, Donnie Grice, our safety coordinator, is now certified to give CPR classes to certify our staff, so we're going to start working on that Thursday with some of Pat's people. And then, from then on, we're going to do it at our orientation, so when we onboard, our employees will be CPR certified. So, I think that's pretty good. Since the last time we met, we've started the new workers' comp company, Millennium. I think we had them in the past. They seem pretty easy to work with, so that's good. And number seventeen is kind of a joint agenda item with the chief. It's just for an overlap position for the station control. This won't be a permanent thing. I think we have it up to six months and budget it fifteen hundred dollars. It's just for DJ, who's in the position now, who has left us and has started to work for the county, can show him how to use like our surveillance and things of that nature, if I'm not mistaken.
And Corey, I'd like you to know that I did go get my biometric screening, and the results were terrible, terrible.
I told you not to be surprised.
So, we're going to, redoing it. We're going to do it again, make sure that that cannot be physically what my body looks like on the inside, so we're going to do it again.
Well, good job.
Conrad, you got anything on there?
No, sir.
All right. I was just trying to slow you down a little bit.
I just had the two, we had a public hearing last week, so items five and six were final adoptions, since we have found, if you have any specific questions about those two projects.
No, I think we're...
I'd like to ask a few. How many residential units is that adding total?
It's no more than the original PUD, so the unit count, I can flip through.
Which one are you talking about?
Exactly. On Fly Creek.
Number five.
Yeah, Fly Creek, y'all...
They actually decrease density, from what I understand.
It's, so oddly enough, the original approval was for ninety townhomes and live-work units as defined. Live-work units were not clearly defined. The preliminary plat approved previously, I think, was seventy, and I can get you the exact numbers, was seventy-eight, but that did not include some of theirs for the live-work. So, this plan is ninety townhome units, just like a previous approved in the PUD. This is kind of, if we had to look at one image, this kind of highlights what the changes are. This area here was listed as live-work. They're proposing the same number of townhomes.
Ninety's total overall, right? Not that live-work area.
That's total overall. Every unit you see on this site plan is ninety townhome units. So, it was either-or townhome, live-work in the previous. This is being proposed as ninety townhomes.
What do I know it looks like? Is that eight individual, or is that, are there one, is there more, multiple stories?
They're multiple stories, but they're one of those with a devising wall going from the ground to the sky. So, it will be two-story, the devising wall separates the units. It's not stacked flats.
Oh, it looks like eight.
So, that would be eight on that site there, as proposed in this plan.
Okay. Are there, is there somewhere else they're putting them?
Every one of these units here, there's, what they did kind of change was that they called the unit mixed. So, some buildings are two units, some three, some four. They changed that mix up a little bit, where I think the previous plan, which is here, you had two, three, and six unit, or eight unit. This one actually adds a six unit and an eight unit. I think they took the threes out, except for what was already built. So, it was, and one of the first things we talked about is the, at least, the previous plan actually showed a lot of architectural detail, and we wanted to ensure whatever they did, so that's some examples of their architecture. I think your package included a plan for each of those prototype units as well. So, this is actually the rear of the property. You can see the garages and how they'll access off the rear of the buildings. But going back here, this is the only public road, and this is already constructed. It's Cordy Ridge Road. So, the building's front, that, there will be a yard with sidewalks, and then there's rear access to those garage.
Space stay the same or better?
Greenspace reduced by decimal point, but it actually, in our opinion, we were able to save some of the key areas and better centrally located, only use centrally as geographically, but better used space by everybody.
Hunter, Chair, if I may?
Please.
Those are, it still says work-live, so just clarify for me, are these going to be mixed-use, or what are we, what's going on right here?
Yeah.
Because I thought we said...
Here's the, the plan as proposed. They want to take, they're proposing to take any live-work context out of this approved plan and build townhomes.
So, just townhomes, no commercial, no mixed-use at all?
Yes. In this phase, this overall PUD is a mixed-use PUD, but Publix, the other...
Yeah, but in this area.
And where we kind of talked about live-work, there is no definition of live-work that they prove. We don't have a definition. Technically, that can be a live-work unit, even if there's townhomes.
Well, yeah.
We can have a home occupation. That's something within our ordinance. I think some of the confusion was some people envision that live-work as traditional mixed-use, where you have commercial place downstairs, residential upstairs.
But that's not happening right here.
That, no.
Okay, that's what I'm asking.
It's not proposed, and I don't think live-work has ever meant that.
No. I was just making sure I understood.
Yeah, just, I would encourage us in the future to not use words that we don't have defined in our ordinances.
Or make someone define them within the PUD. That is completely okay to have something creative in a plan you develop that defines definitions.
The purpose of a PUD is to be creative.
But having a broad description, I think, Councilman Robinson, is spot on.
Well, not broad, but ambiguous, so that we don't know what they're doing, and they don't know what they're supposed to do.
That's correct.
So, is it true they're eliminating some commercial space to make room for residential space?
Could be interpreted that way. But like I said, it's ambiguous. I mean, it's...
Yeah, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah.
But yes, that was...
And taking out what could have been and eliminating the could-have-been to only residential. It could have always been both, but now it can only be residential.
Yeah, that's the question, and they decided to go that route.
Yes. And it can still be, under the commonly accepted definition of live-work, it's where someone lives and operates their business. So, these townhomes can still be that under our home occupation.
Any house could be...
That's correct.
If it meets those requirements.
We're really asking, as far as, what I was trying to get at was, are we putting any commercial tax revenue right there?
No commercial on this spot. We've kind of, you know, I think generically, and we mentioned this in the planning commission, there's the site. You know, this is built, there's still a commercial component here that may come in the future. The apartments that are already constructed are here, and here into the north is where the townhomes will be. There's already been five townhome units constructed here, if you can see my mouse. You know, I did encourage, I think there, this site actually, you know, stated there was economical reasons, a lot of the professional offices that are here remain unrented to this day. You know, I think part of that, there's usually an equilibrium of any project where you have enough people living that might want to use that office space. And I do, I mean, I think this would be a great option to have something that kind of ties it all together. You know, that restaurant, or, you know, we kind of gave some examples of things. And with the PUD, we could make allowance, to make that more dense. This is a steep location. It is a challenging site, but, you know, I don't think the PUD prescribes that to be commercial. I just think that would be a good idea, and was hoping to encourage the applicants to go that route. But I think they have, the use of the townhomes, I think, in the PUD that we approve allows that.
Yeah. Mr. Hunt, let me just elaborate a little more, and I understand it's allowed. I don't question whether or not it's allowed, but you know, these, some of these PUDs take so many years to develop, and they change it over and over and over. And what they also change with are market condition, and what brings that developer the most profit or the best and highest use of that. And they promise one thing and then deliver something else. And that's what I, I mean, I'm not have severe heartache over this, but, you know, when they say they're going to have a good balance between commercial and retail and residential, and then everything always seems to go residential. And Counsel, I'll give you an example, you know, the Airport Authority has that land that's on the west side of the airport, and that's its own light industrial. And we have very, 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 we have a very small amount of light industrial in this city. And I've had developers say, yeah, well, will you sell it and let us build houses there? And I say, well, I'm one person, but I'm not going to vote to rezone that, because we're taking away ground that we need one day light industry on, and it's going to be residential. So I just worry about the makeup, the chemistry of a community that is all bedrooms and not enough of anything else. That's just one little small part, but that's, it's just one more step towards more bedrooms and an imbalance. And they gave us this putt, if they can't rent their space, not our responsibility to make their land profitable, and I've seen that a lot, well, I need to make more dense so I can make the numbers work. Well, that's your problem, maybe it won't work. Or I need to now build bedrooms because I can't get the other to work.
And I think that's a pretty common request we get on anything that has a commercial component. You know, our task is, varies, and we often use the word sustainability in, as it relates to environmental issues. There's a component that we need to be prepping and preserving those commercial spaces, because that is a form of sustainability that gives that tax base that we can afford to do other things with that money, whether it's environmental protections, or ball fields, or, you know, things like that. So I think message is loud and clear, and I think we tend to echo that in many meetings and at staff level as we're getting those requests, but, I mean, Stone Creek was one project that was supposed to have a large commercial component to it that never got built out, converted to all residential. So in this sense, recommend, this one doesn't give me as much heartburn as some of those.
But it's just that trend towards making it more profitable for these developers when they come and sell us on an idea, and then they don't build it out over 10 years and they come back, well, I can make more money if I do this.
Yeah, and I mean, this is, and this is why we went to the trouble of offering this idea, because for the good of this project, I do think that should be a commercial location. I think it, it should, could be a heart of that working, and tie the people in the apartments, townhomes, to the office space, it could be a great asset, but, you know, that component is owned by someone that wants to do townhomes, and our PUD doesn't preclude that. So I don't think it's necessarily fair to mandate that at this stage of the game, it's a little late.
To use the argument it doesn't preclude, it doesn't mean you have to allow it just because it's allowable either.
It's actually already allowed, you know, the townhomes, live-work.
Why are they asking for a change?
Well, a lot of the change here was the buildings, that was just kind of a clear, clarifying the use while they're in here, and I got to pull glasses out again. This was the main three changes, there were some road realignments to accommodate the new buildings, and then the architectural details and changes. These conversations here, when did we first, I think, it's been almost 18 months ago, when they first came in with the idea of changing what they're building. As you can see, there's five built, they're, for townhomes, they're beautiful buildings. It was a well-designed townhome.
Yeah.
And we didn't want to lose that quality by just sticking up fast, you know, generic townhomes, so they've been working on those plans to revise.
Hunter, I just, you know, with this, I guess, are we going to negate or take these words out, the work-live unit? I mean, because this is the original concept, correct? Even over the years, it was supposed to be some type of, that's why I was trying to get it clear, were they still, because I think the spirit of that was to actually do something mixed-use, and I think we got confused with, is, was that, as I, when I was, from what I read earlier, and to where we are, at the beginning, there was a spirit of some type of commerciality in that area, and then we kind of got in the weeds with the work-live, and that's how we got back to the townhomes.
So.
So are we going to get rid of that as well, my question?
And the first, the first, yes.
Okay.
For this phase, that is taken off.
I mean, period, so that doesn't happen again to where you can play on words and then it kind of.
Yes, we, anything we look at, I think, clarifying the definition of, and sometimes, you know, we've done this on the Ingleside, which you were sitting on the Planning Commission of. They use live-work. We didn't define that as a term, but we had an exact floor plan of the two, of the four units, and this is what it looks like, there's the, the bad, they have a staircase going from an upstairs living quarters to a down, you know, it wasn't two separate units. So we defined it in one form. One of the, the plans we do not have, and y'all probably remember it, the first P plan that came in and was approved as a PUD was kind of color-coded, and it also included the, do you remember the acreage, there's single family yet to be done within this PUD that kind of at the end of Cordy Ridge Road. And it was color-coded, and it was kind of percentages of live-work and commercial and townhomes, apartments. Then you see this amendment, which also included the townhomes and apartments only. And then we got to a P, a final site plan, and this unit was out, left off completely. And this is the approved plan. So when we received this, it wasn't, and this was in 2006, this wasn't proposed as live-work, it was on the plan that preceded this one, in that approval.
Okay.
It was proposed as live-work, but it was not even to this detail, it was a color-coded.
I know, yeah, I saw it, yeah, that's what I was saying, and then, okay, so.
So we've approved, we've already approved a PUD with this being townhomes.
Okay.
In this sense. We've also got one out there that says somewhere in this area is a live-work. Now this closes the door on this phase, so there's no more live-work to be had until potentially moving into that next area behind here, which I have never heard anybody approach that project yet.
Thank you, Hunter. Council, any other questions for Hunter? Thank you, sir. All right, so going back through the, Eric, do you have anything? Anybody else?
Yeah, I think Kim has something on there.
Looking at number seven, the City of Fairhope Employee Fund.
Yeah.
I want to discuss that, explain that. Reminds me too much of the human fund.
Exactly, that sounds like.
We have some vending machines, snack machines, you've probably have seen them in the back of the Del Champs rooms, and I believe they've been there for a long time, and I believe that vendor is pulling them, so we're going out there trying to find other vendors. Well, we have a rule of a franchise fee that's for anybody, I guess, selling on city property. Well, we were having trouble finding a vendor that we're asking these vendors to come in here, and we look at what our franchise fee is of 20%, and sometimes it's just, it's harder for those vendors to understand the city realm. But we're just trying to get machines in that our employees can go buy, get a bag of potato chips, and it's not $2 for a bag of potato chips, when that vendor's throwing in what that 20% franchise fee. And so we looked at some other, well, I looked at how Ballin County does it, and we have, they have machines around, and y'all probably seen those in courthouses, and you sit there and you negotiate with those vendors based on volume, they'll give you a commission check, which is very similar to the franchise, it's not as much as 20%. So that's where we were putting this in together, it's for our employees, I don't feel like the city's trying to make a lot of money off that snack machine, and then the money that we, there is, we want to put it into employee fund, and that's where it can be used for Christmas, when we have our Christmas parties, and we have gift door prizes and gift prizes, to utilize that money. So I hope I explained that, I mean, but it is to put these machines in this building, down at the warehouse where we have employees, the Conne Building now, we have the planning departments there, so we're trying to find a way of just being able to put vending versus us trying to go to Sam's and put some snacks out and try to use a, an honor system, but I hope that explains it.
So what are we doing now?
We have some machines that's been here, we don't know how long, probably forever, and we don't, there was no payment that's being done that we can tell.
So somebody's just running the machines and collecting the money and not doing the franchise fee at all?
That's right.
Okay.
That's right, and I understand those machines, they were wanting, you know, a lot of times it's not volume, it's not a lot of money being made on those machines, that they were wanting to pull those machines. And then we have employees that like come to this machine, why are they charging 75 cents for a bag here and 60 cents for a bag over here? So we're trying to find one company that can be consistent, and I think there's been a request to have a machine at the rec center. And then Coke, we already have agreements with Coca-Cola, we do receive, you know, franchise from the Coke machines, but this is just talking about those snacks.
So you have somebody that, the people that are in business now, that are basically paying no commission to us, first, that raises a lot of questions, you know, secondly, you have somebody that will come in here with machines, even though they're not making much money at all?
We've, we've reached out, you know, trying to, we reached out to several companies to give us proposals, so trying to find, you know, the best company that can do our area, has a business license in City of Fairhope to be able to, you know, run these vending machine companies.
So if they're in the rec center, that's going to be open to the public as well? So you're going to open it up to somebody to serve the public with no franchise fee, but the other franchisees have to pay the fee?
They're going to pay a commission, and still, and the commission, the commission is greater, more the volume is. So a machine here at City Hall is not going to have the same, same commission as what you might have a rec center, it just depends on volume.
Yeah.
So then we're asking for that check to be able to be, put into employee fund, to be able to utilize, still coming to the city.
So, if I may, Jack, are you finishing? I'm sorry, Council Chair, if I may.
Please.
What about, what are we doing, what have we been doing? We're creating a new fund, where has the funds been going from the young man Coke at the rec center? What were we doing with?
It goes into general fund under a miscellaneous income.
So you, so we're changing that, or we're going to add him to?
No, 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 that's already done, and that's separate, this would be just for the vending, the snack machines.
Just the snack machines.
That we're currently not getting any money on.
Yeah.
And Coke, we don't count Coke machines as vending or snack machines?
No, this is just for the snack machines.
Okay, just snack.
Just for the snack machines.
Chips, nothing drink.
Yes, because the Cokes were, now, we already have, they already pay the franchise, they have machines like out on the pier, they have it on different, more variety of properties.
I got you, yeah, so we're separating those two.
Vendors paying a franchise fee?
So this is just snacks?
So this is just snacks, we're separating.
They're not, they're not a, or they're the one that snacks, just the snack machines, but then you want to do 30 or 60, so you can't, I mean, like, but then you should.
Yeah, I get it.
And we'll get a commission, but it is based on higher volume.
So how many machines are we looking for? If I may?
Four, I believe, four, four or five machines. We're looking at one for City Hall, here at City Hall, Public Works, put one in the Conne Building, rec, and tennis, I think is what's been asked.
Okay, all right. Thanks, Kim.
Thank you, Kim. All right, who wants to discuss Item Number 15, mutual assistance agreement? South Alabama Mutual Assistance Agreement between the City of Fairo.
Disaster.
Yeah, this is, yeah. Okay, got it.
No economics, right?
Yeah. All right, Number 18, chief liquor license for Number 18, for the venue. Number 19 is the Thomas Hospital request to serve beer down by the pier for the cornhole for a cause tournament. I think there's something specific they have to do to sell down there, is that right? Chief, are you involved in Number 19?
No.
Okay. We do this for the grand man, give him permission to serve alcohol down there, but it's got to be barricaded off in a certain way to comply with ABC, and so we'll, obviously this is contingent on them getting, doing it the right way to be ABC compliant.
That's the hospital, correct?
Correct. All right, and then, Richard, if you want to come back up and let's talk track?
Go back to the liquor, the request from Thomas Hospital, so that's at South Park, at the south of the pier? And we've let grand man serve there?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, you probably said all that, I just missed where that was.
And if it helps you any, the other day I missed lunch, so I headed back to the break room to get a Snickers bar, and the machine was gone, so I appreciate you, Kim, working on that.
So they have been removed already?
I would know where that came from.
Yeah. So this is vital.
So, Richard, you know, I think we all kind of want to have, talk a little bit about the track, I know that I've looked at a lot of different things, it's the last time we met, talked to a lot of different people, I think each of the councilmen have probably done the same on their own, just trying to get our mind and our arms around what it is we're doing, and, you know, I don't know that I've ever been so back and forth on some, one single item. But my biggest concern, you know, obviously the money was, was an initial factor, but I've come to grips with that, you know, taking into consideration that we got three bids that were all very close together, looking at some of the projects in other areas, and so my focus is more, and my questions are more on the actual layout of this, and making sure that it is set up in a way that allows us to get the best use out of the track and its setup. And I know that there have been meetings with the engineers and the track guys at the high school, and I've had discussions with some of them, and I know that there were some issues with layout that the track guys were concerned about, and so I just want to make sure, before we get too deep into the development of it, that these guys are, from a functional standpoint, sort of blessing that this is going to be set up in a way and laid out in a way that can, that can serve the needs that we are trying to accomplish here.
And I'll probably let the designer kind of address that, we did meet with the coaches, and, you know, I appreciate, this is, this is my first track to be any involved with, and that's not an area of expertise that I have. I can tell you that, just so you know, the design standard that this meets or exceeds was the National Federation of State High School Associations, track and field and cross-country, and it's their standards, specifications, rulebook, which the Alabama High School Athletic Association references what a track has to meet from a design criteria to meet their specification for a meet. So that, that's kind of the designing book, which is so that it meets a state performance standard there. I will tell you, and I'll let Jay kind of describe it, the, when we met with the track coaches, they had some legitimate concerns because of the location of shot put, theoretically a bad shot could end up on the track, okay? And as far as being able to move that back in that end zone and relocate another element in the other, that was a very easy fix, and that seemed to satisfy them, and that gave a lot larger area for an errant shot put, okay? Especially if they were trying to have actual activities on the track as well as a shot put at the same time, that that decreased that. So I think, my opinion, and I know Jay has even already gone through some of those adjustments and been in communication, so I think those particular elements were addressed. You know, the, I think that as a whole, with Pat and his operations, trying to make sure that that track could serve as many needs as possible, sometimes gets into a little bit of a concern, well, we don't really like that because, you know, this or that, but I think that was one of the underlying goals, was trying to make it be as many things to as many constituents as possible, sometimes call some of that. So I do feel like that we listen to their concerns, and I think everything was a pretty easy fix, and I think that's already been addressed. And I do want to make sure that I clarify something, because you made a good point earlier, we should never use the term until everybody agrees what the definition was, okay? And one of the terms that I have used is that, you know, the goal of this project was turn key, what does that mean? And I will tell you from your Public Works Director, what does turn?